I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my shoulders, under God, in the visible and in the deepest of our hearts.
I have a bid results.
We, Carol, Ann Field, Dusty Clark, and I opened bids for contract 2004-03. It was for a 125D DC station battery rack charger and accessories. This is for use in our new substation. We received two quotes. One was from Stuart C. Erby Company out of Liverpool, New York. Bid item number one was $10,945. Bid item number two, which is the charger, was $2,884. The second bid was from Wesco out of South Burlington, Vermont. Bid item number one, which was for the station battery and rack. That amount was $12,346. And for bid item number two, which is the charger and accessories, that was for $4,743. We received a phone call. These bid results were facts to Kurt Wilson, electrical engineer for the village, to review them. Mr. Wilson called today. Well, actually called the end of last week and left two messages that Mr. Pelkey and I listened to today. It is Mr. Wilson's recommendation that the board award the bid to Wesco. Even though the price is higher, he said it is exactly what we need. He is checking with the manufacturer to confirm a few questions that he has, but he believes because of the size and the space this takes, Wesco's station battery is seven foot long and the Stuart Erby is 13 feet nine inches long, which would take up the majority of room in our new building. He said the Wesco is by far the better, so he is recommending that the board approve that subject as verification for approval.
You want that to wash now or not?
If you're gonna do it.
Motion by Trustee Huckrow.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Penfield. Discussion. There being no discussion, roll call vote, Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jarvison.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
And the second contract opening was contract 2004-04. It was for a switchgear. It's to replace the one that malfunctioned on the corner crossing the village office. We received three bids. First one was from Stuart C. Erby in the amount of $28,455 with an alternate bid of a different one for $9,596. Wesco out of South Burlington came in at $21,117. And Cooper Power Systems in the amount of $22,880. Mr. Wilson did review these. It is his recommendation that we go with Wesco, who was the low bidder of $21,117. I asked him about the Stuart Erby alternate of $9,500 and he said it is not acceptable in any way to the village for this switchgear. So it is his recommendation that we go with the Wesco bid of $21,117.
Will it, so you can get reimbursed on some of that?
Oh, I'll give you a quick update on that as well. John, for who's second?
I didn't hear.
Do the vote and then I'll tell you about the claim.
Any discussion? No discussion, roll call vote, Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jarvison.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
The mayor votes aye.
We're working with the insurance carriers right now. Kurt Wilson and Brian Pelkey have both given their opinion as to the issue with the, they feel it's a malfunction, not wear and tear. The insurance carrier has sent an electrical engineer, I appear he was here last week, and we have yet to receive his report. If, apparently if the issue, if their engineer feels this is wear and tear, then they will disallow the claim, which puts us in a situation where we have our engineer saying it's wear and tear, it's a malfunction, their engineer is saying it's wear and tear. And if that should come to pass, then I would ask the board for authorization to go out for an independent third opinion from an electrical engineer. And if they concur with our people, then I believe it's worth discussing this with the insurance company again. However, if they concur with the insurance company, then basically it's a moot issue.
What's the price of that switch?
Pardon me?
What was the price of that?
Twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars.
Brian, what's your opinion on it?
I think it was a malfunction. It wasn't wear and tear. And I think we should move with the new switch because Wesco, we went to, it's called a G&amp;W switch, and that's what we've been buying. The last time we went out to bid, we received four of them, and they seem to be a very nice switch and they're easy to operate. And I like to keep them pretty much standard, all the same, in case we ever do have a problem. Rather than having five, six different kinds of switches in our system, that way we can have one spare. So if we do ever have another problem, we can just change it out, rather than go through this hole.
Is there like a shelf length that you like a piece of wire, you know, after eight years, you just get rid of that?
No. No, actually, it could last forever. It could be human error. I mean, it could be a fault in the metal, it could be a fault in the oils. It could last forever. It's just one of them things that happened to us.
Okay. Thank you. I open the meeting to the public at this time for comments. Everybody who wishes to address the door, Moore may do so. Close the section of the meeting. Well, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Admit us to the previous meeting. All those got copies, see if there are any additions or deletions.
All those that we accept the minutes as written?
All seconded out. Motion by Trustee Penfield, seconded by Trustee Jarvison. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. Any additions, sir?
No.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight. Pardon?
We go to recent, either.
Okay. I have a motion. All seconded. Seconded, motion by Trustee Jarvison, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for, one for Phil and two for our sent.
What?
Phil, page two, Atlantic Detroit Diesel, Allison. The service for the generators, the second one from the bottom.
Yes.
Are we, we're all set with signing off on the other company and this is the new company?
Yes, this is the new company. And we received above and beyond, I wish Tom Reed could explain it better than I. We had issues with the generator at the sewage treatment plant, which would have been above and beyond a normal yearly maintenance that we have with these folks here. So that bill represents that additional repair work to service one of the generators, that generator at the sewage plant. But we are all settled with Atlantic Diesel and everyone, including Brian, I guess, is pleased that we've gone with these folks.
Okay. All right. Next question, fourth page in. The bills for the LeBarge Agency to add the deodorator, does that add into our policy? That's what the 108 represents for the year, our sent?
Yes.
Okay. So for the remainder of the year until we renew?
Until July.
Till July.
And is this through the fire department or is this something in one of the village bills?
That's the fire department.
Fire department?
That's the fire department.
In the AMs.
Yeah. Brian, I think all 22 or something.
So that's the new machine?
In the AMs.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's the able-bodied.
Okay. And then on the back of that page, our sent, is brothers being the four in contract and retrieved blood brothers?
Mm-hmm.
Where are we now? Is that it or do we have more?
No, there's still, there's still a balance remaining of, I believe it's around 24,000.
And are we still waiting on the results of the walk on Main Street or is that not related, that unrelated to?
The balance remaining is 24,192, which is the 5% retainage.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have quite a pile tonight. First letter we have is a letter dated November 8th. It's addressed to the Honorable Mayor and Board of Trustees. Dear Mayor and Board of Trustees, it is with regret, but I find I must resign as a member of the Library Board for health reasons. I wish my resignation to take effect immediately. It has been an honor to have served on the Library Board over these many years. Most sincerely, Dawn Esselboyle.
I'm going to take a motion to accept the regrets.
Yes, I'll move to accept. Father Boo is gonna take your job.
I'll second out. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Second letter we have is a letter dated November 1st.
It was addressed to myself and Melissa McManus, Director of Community Planning. It's, Dear Phil and Melissa, your letter of October 11, 2004, expressing your thoughts on the National Main Street Center approach was timely and much appreciated. It is a challenging task we have undertaken to match the desires and needs of communities with the realities of the fiscal environment. With the support of community partners like Rouse's Point, we are hopeful that the downtown revitalization recommendations you helped to develop will create the foundation for sound community center revitalization. We are excited to hear that Rouse's Point's downtown has begun experiencing benefits from participation as a quality community, pilot community, and from your personal participation at the quality communities workshops and training sessions. You mentioned in your letter that you learned a great deal about downtown revitalization at the sessions. We also learned a great deal from you, hearing firsthand about the issues the pilot quality communities are facing and their revitalization efforts. It is also good to hear that the pilot communities have formed relationships where you are able to share your downtown revitalization experiences. Thank you for recognizing the efforts of this division. We believe that establishing working relationships with the communities that participate in the division's grant programs helps us to provide better services to you. We wish you continued success and look forward to working with you on your downtown revitalization project. Sincerely, George R. Stafford, Director, Division of Coastal Resources. The next letter we received was a letter from Bruce Wallis, Supervisor, Town of Champlain, addressed Mayor Rivers and Village Trustees, dated November 1st. Upon reviewing the request for additional funding regarding the civic center, several questions were asked concerning the activities and the participants. Our most recent list is the master registration for the North Country Youth Hockey Club dated February the 11th, 2004. This shows players from many different areas, Village of Champlain, Alberg, New York, Alberg, Vermont, Plattsburgh, Moores, West Shizzi, Moores Forks, and Altona. The town board has inquired to several of these municipalities to see if funding has been requested by the village of Rouse's Point in order to aid the civic center. Of the towns and villages we contacted, all have said they were never been approached. We are wondering why only the Town of Champlain has been asked to contribute. As you are aware, the joint youth program, which is made up of the Village of Champlain, Village of Rouse's Point, and the Town of Champlain, all contribute to the operation. The Village of Champlain contributes $3,200, Village of Rouse's Point contributes $4,000, and the town contributes $18,500. We are curious as to why no other municipality has been asked to contribute. Sincerely, Bruce Wallis, Supervisor. Next letter we received was a letter from Dodge Memorial Library, signed by Arthur Tremblay, President of the Board. Dear Mayor George Rivers and members of the Village Board of Trustees, we were saddened to hear of Donna Boyle's resignation as a member of the Library Board. She has been an interested and productive member and will be missed by all. Now, we are faced with filling the vacancy and hope that you will accept our recommendation, which we would like to present for the December Village Board meeting. We hope that the century-old tradition and courtesy of the Village Board, considering the choice of the Library Board, would be upheld as always. We welcome unanimously Father Clyde Lewis as a board member and are sure that he will be a valued member of our group. It was dated November the 14th and signed by Arthur Tremblay. The next letter, that letter and the next letter were not on the agenda, we just received them today or Friday. The next letter is from Robert Timothy Clark. It's addressed to the Village Board. Please consider this as my resignation from my position as Chief Lineman, effective November the 30th, 2004. Although I have enjoyed working for the Village of Rouse's Point and have learned a great deal, I would really like to operate in a wider management sphere. And since you have not been willing to provide this opportunity, I feel that I should seek a position that allows greater freedom to make decisions and to function more independently. As you know, my job has not changed in the six years I have been with you. Although you have been fair in terms of compensation, I feel the need to grow professionally as well as financially. Thank you for all your help and your many personal kindnesses. Sincerely, Robert Timothy Clark.
You motion on that?
Sure.
I move to accept the resignation with this motion, first, your chair. Second. Motion made by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, reports of the mayor and the Board of Trustees. Local law five, I need a motion. We had a public hearing last year, or last meeting on it, we did not pass it. So I need a motion to pass it, local law number five, and that is allowing pre-existing hedges, fences to stay in place. You got it. Motion by Trustee Huckrow.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no, roll call on that, Phil?
Yes.
Roll call, vote, Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And I wish to announce, the Canadian Pacific Holiday Train has honored us again and will be here Saturday, the 4th of December at 11:00 PM, and it'll be here for one hour, which is, they have a whole new show this year. That is some good news. If you want to attend, you're more than welcome, but we would appreciate if you bring a canned goods for the food show, because that's what it's all about. They make a sizable donation to the food show. If you bring a canned goods up and enjoy the free show. Next thing is appointment to the Library Board. I received that resignation, I don't know when it was, personally, on the 8th of November, and I have contacted a person and recommending that, Mrs. Donna Racine, be appointed to the Library Board, and I need a motion for that. I'd like to make that motion. Second. Second, motion by Trustee Jarvison, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion? Good choice. No discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
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 Sort of an odd motion vote.
No, well, I was gonna, my only comment was going to be that, in light of the letter that we received, you know, maybe we wanted to touch base with them first, but no. But that's, I think Donna's an excellent choice.
Along with that, I don't think this board can do it, but Donna has made mention, and I think it's an excellent idea that the one member of that Library Board will always be to fill this story. Good idea. And that's gonna, I think that that's gonna be done in the bylaws of the Library Board, and she's gonna bring that up. But I think it's an excellent idea. And I'm gonna request executive session for pending litigation, and I need a second to that. All seconded. Motion made and seconded, roll call, vote, Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jarvison.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Due to the upcoming retirement of Mary Nottell at the end of December, I wish to make a memorable appointment to fill the unexpired term of Mrs. Nottell's village registrar position, which will end in April 2005, with Carol Henfield, to be effective January 1, 2002, to be effective January 1, 2005. And I need a second to that. All right. And, roll call on that, Phil?
Uh, no, we don't.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carried. And I'll make us another appointment. Due to the upcoming retirement of Mary Nottell at the end of December 1, I wish to make the following marital appointment to fill the unexpired term of Mary Nottell as, Mrs. Nottell, village deputy treasurer position, which will end in April 2005, with Rebecca Diso. This is due to be effective January 1, 2005. And I need a second. You got it. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Vote by the usual sign of aye. No opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me. Trustee Huckrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is, at a steering committee meeting of the quality community steering committee the other day, it was suggested we have a member of the zoning board on the committee, which I think was a very good suggestion, and I would like to, in view of that, appoint Timothy Minkorn as a member of the steering committee.
I need a motion, no? Good.
Again, let me see, we don't have a meeting before the next one. The annual parade of toys will be held on December 3rd, beginning at 6:45 at Rouse Park, and we will march from there to the gazebo, where we will have tree lighting and sound of thought, followed by singing of Christmas carols and cocoa and cookies and all that good kind of stuff. And we're asking all those people that are participating to please bring their favorite toy with them that evening.
Will Santa be here?
Santa will be with us.
Okay.
Yes, he will. Unfortunately, we don't have the Santa we had the previous year, but we do have the dear Santa with us. Just to lightly, just to make notice that the zoning board, I can't even talk tonight. Zoning Board appeals for the village to hold a public hearing on Monday, December 13th, 2004, 4:30 PM or shortly thereafter, here at Halsted Hall, at the Rouse's Point Civic Center of the Village of Rouse's Point. The purpose is that the owners of a Chinese restaurant that is requesting occupancy at the, we'll call it the Montmartre complex, are looking for a special use, changing use permit. And one more, I guess. On behalf of the fire chief, I'm making a motion to authorize the clerk to write to the Champlain Town Board, asking them to consider annexing the property surrounding the customs house and the bridge to the Village of Rouse's Point.
Second. Motion made by Trustee Huckrow, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion?
This is, this came out of a meeting involving the coverage of the area, is that correct?
Yeah. Brian, would you explain why we're doing that, so people know?
The customs house and part of the bridge is actually in Champlain's fire district fire protection, so if somebody gets in an accident on the bridge or they need the ambulance at the Rouse's Point Customs, they dispatch Champlain's ambulance to those two parcels of property. And this would annex it into the village and we would respond, because, I mean, for them to drive by our station to answer a call, I think it slipped, it fell through the cracks years ago where it should have been all annexed into the village. I mean, I don't think they'd be losing tax dollars because it's a government building and...
That's tax, yeah.
Right. And it's a state highway.
Public safety, should be.
Yeah, definitely. More of a public safety than anything else.
Any other discussion?
I think we should be very certain to stress that, please say not a public safety in our letter.
More discussion? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Huckrow, Trustee Penfield.
Aaron is with us again this evening, and I know he gave a copy of the topics of discussion for tonight, so I guess I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Aaron and he can brief us on what is going on.
Good evening, everyone. Just got off the day on a sewer project. On contract four, which is the Porch Main and Outfall, the Porch Main work is about 95% installed. There's a little bit of Porch being yet to be done once the Influent Building is constructed, and a little bit of testing and final tie-ins to be done. But otherwise, the majority of that work is complete. Approximately 2,000 lineal feet of the outfall is done, which is about 40%, so Act Two is making progress there. Luckily for them, the weather's holding out, and they're still able to move along quite fast. I believe they're currently up by Wolfman Apparel, so just to give you an idea of where they stand. There's been two utility conflicts that have arisen down, they're both basically on the causeway leading down to the lake. To fix these, it involved the installation of two additional manholes that weren't initially shown on the drawings. But it's our feeling that those repairs took away the, I guess I need to reword, or you could say that, additional manholes, whether these conflicts have been known upfront, would still have been necessary, so it really should not add any additional cost to the contract. The only issue we do have is there were some slow-ups for Act Two, and we're currently negotiating any cost due to time delays. And we have an upcoming project meeting on Thursday in which we can discuss that further with Eric Schwanke from ESC and Act Two Construction. At that point, we'll have a better idea of what type of delays Act Two currently feels is appropriate. Contract five, the Influent Building Foundation and Influent Metering Structure are underway. I believe the iron workers are currently installing rebar for the foundation, reinforcing. Miscellaneous improvements at the wastewater treatment plant are being done simultaneous with this. And one issue that we did come across is in excavating the foundation for the Influent Building. It was determined that when we dug up some of the existing piping, there appeared to be one section of pipe that was in poor condition. This is from the original construction back in the 80s. We don't really know if, you know, the pipe was damaged when it was installed or if it was just a bad, you know, bad piece of pipe, but it appears that it would be a good idea to replace that at this time. What we have been discussing, and no decision has been made as of yet, but the village, I believe, has, have you received the new line stop equipment yet?
No.
Well, once it is received, it would be a good candidate for the village to use that on to stop the flow from the oxidation ditch, and then under the chain, under a change order, we could get Sheen to replace that section of pipe. From the condition of the pipe, it appears that it would not make any sense to bury it, because it's gonna be a problem sooner or later, so. And contract eight, the trunk sewer clean inspection and sealing, Senator Tranis mobilized to the site. They're currently constructing the bypass piping and pumping arrangement that will be needed to allow them to clean out and televise the trunk sewer. And I believe Doug will give you a better handle on their schedule in his report. That's all I have for today.
Where are they, Aaron, in terms of the outfall plan, potentially, in the lake?
That is... That is, has not been constructed yet. That lake crossing pipe was a special utility. It was on a 10-week lead just to get the materials here. I believe I approved that supplemental roughly five or six weeks ago, so the material still hasn't arrived at the site, and I believe their plan is, once it's here, to try and get that in before the weather gets any colder than it already is.
So it'll let me do another five weeks before it arrives?
Correct.
Okay.
As it is a specialty item, there's really not a stockpile of it around anywhere. It's generally made in order.
But it's still something that might be done?
Correct.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
I have, Aaron, I have one question, just to kind of follow up to what we were talking about earlier with regard to the problem we have with the manholes. The proposed change order for Act Two was a little, a little bit in excess of $9,000. If I understood you correctly, based on what you told me, you're hopeful that that'll be reduced substantially?
Substantially.
Okay.
Thank you, Trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, I just have a couple things on the agenda tonight. We've been informed by New York State Electric and Gas that they won't be having a power outage at this time. Perhaps it will be in the spring, and I just wanted to apologize that we didn't get the word out, we didn't get the word till late that they were going to have a shutdown on November 13th, but at the last minute, they figured the weather was too cold and they're going to update their equipment in the spring when the weather's a little bit better. Phil, could you read the thing on the winter parking van? I don't seem to have that in my paper here.
Chief Craig put out a notice and we did press release, I did this last week. It says, "The village office wishes to remind all drivers that the parking van for all vehicles on the village streets between the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM will be in effect from December 104 to March 3105. This prohibition is necessary to permit the efficient plowing of streets and to prevent damage to any private vehicles during plowing or sanding operations. This ban must be enforced. If necessary, cars will be towed at the owner's expense. In a related matter, residents are asked to make sure that cars parked in driveways do not block the sidewalks. Individuals who snowplow driveways, et cetera, are also reminded they are not to push the snow so that it blocks sidewalks and other thoroughfares. If this occurs, the individual plow operators will be charged for the labor and equipment needed to remove the snow." And we've published that in the press, North Tenterland Islander, and it's posted in the village office.
And part of the reason is, too, is a couple of boys in the village that have wheelchairs have a hard time getting warm on State or on Lake Street of Maple, so keep that in mind. Appreciate that. A couple of board meetings ago, discussion was held concerning the purchase of an infrared camera for our electric department through our IEEP account. We asked Mike Lyons from Honeywell to solicit quotes so we could obtain the best competitive price available. Based on the specifications, we requested two quotes were received. FLIR Systems, $28,636. Infrared Solutions Camera was $29,288. Both quotes include training for two people. I would like to make a motion tonight to purchase the infrared camera from FLIR Systems for $28,636, and the money will come from our IEEP fund money.
Motion by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion?
Yeah. Do you have two people going on, Brian, and we talked about Dave Jewell?
Yes. That'll be a while yet.
Chris Johnson.
And this is the same camera that we were talking about a couple of months ago?
Yeah.
Okay.
Save a lot of money for the village.
That's only a five-day level one.
That's the reason we're doing it, is to save a lot of money because it's going to find the spots and houses in the village where we're losing power. So heat, power, heating, I guess, you know.
And just kind of a quick update on that same subject. I was talking with Mike Lyons from Honeywell, and there are two other municipalities that their elect, the respective electric departments are negotiating with their boards to purchase this same camera, and if that comes to pass, Mike was saying that this, the price of this camera might be reduced further, anywhere from $1,000 to $1,500. So we're going to hold off on ordering just for a short time until these other municipalities have a chance to move through their prospective boards, just so to let you know, it might be a little bit less.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow, aye. Trustee Penfield, aye. Trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Moore, aye. And the mayor votes aye.
Okay. Power Tech has recently undergone an energy lighting audit by Grainger Industrial Supply. As a result, Power Tech would like to replace some of their lighting fixtures with energy-efficient replacements. IEEP, Independent Energy Efficiency Program, has reviewed and approved the energy efficiency initiative proposed by Power Tech. The total cost of the project will be $11,320. I'd like to acknowledge at this time the effort made by Trustee Huckrow, he put a lot of time in on this, and we appreciate it. And I'd like to make a motion to fund 50% of the project from our IEEP funds per a total of $5,660.
I'll second it. Motion made by Trustee Jefferson, seconded by Trustee Huckrow. Any discussion?
It doesn't work, we put the ballots and all that in. Wherever they get.
Wherever they get. There is...
And that's part of the price, is that what?
Also, there is a disposal price in there, so that the old ballots are disposed of and not given to somebody else to use, because we've had that happen before. But I have a question. In that audit, and I think I asked this before, but I'm not sure if I got the right answer though, the six or eight, or so streetlights, is an upgrade made, could be made to them? Around that...
On Lincoln Boulevard, no.
That's part of this.
That's not part of this.
No.
Okay. Any other discussion? All, roll call, vote. Trustee Huckrow, aye. Trustee Penfield, aye. Trustee Jefferson, aye. Trustee Moore, aye. And the mayor votes aye.
Okay, and I just have one other thing tonight. I've been tossing this around for a while, and I haven't really had a chance to talk to the rest of the board about it, but I'd like to kind of see here in the village if we could try to cut our energy usage, just by going around and just cutting lights wherever we can in the village. You know, I'm not saying we're wasting energy, but as the colder weather comes around, we go into the nuclear surcharge energy, and it's costing us a lot of extra money. So I'm hoping if we can just be just a little bit more energy efficient within the village, we could maybe cut 10% off some of our power bills and stuff. So it's not something that we're going to take action tonight, but as we get closer to our budget, we'd like to see if maybe we could, you know, try to cut back a little bit just on some... I'm sure if we looked around in the village, we can cut the power in, you know, a lot of different places, so I'm kind of recommending that two, three times during the day that we look around the village and if there's lights and there's heat that we aren't using, maybe we could just turn it down a little bit, so something we're going to look into. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Trustee Jefferson. Trustee Moore, aye.
Not a thing.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry to get in the way.
Phil?
I have nothing, sir.
All right, Sam?
The only thing I'd like to say is to let Brian know that we are in supplemental power twelve months of the year.
I know that, and it's not new to get our power anymore. But we're in, we're in supplemental power twelve months a year. Just because of our...
Just because of our low village.
Yeah.
There are some good points to that and bad points. You know, the bad point is it costs more, the good point is we're not charged any ratcheting charge.
Well, I can remember back in the 70s, we used to look around the Green Union and say, "What lights can we turn off? Turn this light off, turn that light off." It just made sense, you know, it's just, you know, it's little things, but kind of a little bit here and kind of a little bit there, you know?
Just help out.
Something to think about.
Brian?
Thank you.
Ducky?
Just, uh...
Going down in the road here.
Okay. Just following up on what Aaron had to say, work is going on at the outfall, and we have Ken Planty out there observing that work, and Eric Schwanki is working at the wastewater treatment plant, and he's following the activities of Severn Trent. And as Aaron said, I'd say a little bit more about Severn Trent. As you know, that's the contract that involves the cleaning of the trunk line, the sewer line, going to the north end pump station behind the homes on Lake Street and Montgomery Street. So we wanted to let the taxpayers know that in the next few days, for the next couple of weeks, you're going to have people in your backyard accessing those manholes to... First, we're going to be putting a camera in to see what's in there, and then second, we're going to then clean it out. And any work that is done, your lawns will be restored to their original condition or better. And in the next couple of days, a village representative will be by with a flyer to explain further what's going on and if you have any questions. Besides that, Dale and myself are working on a photo album that I talked about last time, and we should have that done by the next board meeting. And also, we've been working on an easement for Ryan Pelkey and his electrical crew from behind the Sunoco to bring power to the dentist and the youth pharmacy. And last week, Kelly, you had a question about outfall piping?
Yes.
And that pipe is supposed to be here December 15 for the water section. Any further questions?
Thank you, Doug. Mike?
The only thing I have is, I don't know if the board knows it or not, but Crest View Apartments has been sold. That's been a problem in the past. Well, we have the same problem again, and I haven't been able to locate the new owner. Still have a few leads to check up on it. So if you get calls about the garbage and the mess, we're working on it, but there's no solution to that place.
I hope by the other day it's all piled up.
I've been around and around with the health department, the sheriff's department, and everybody else, and it's, it never ends, you know, so.
Why don't we go and pick it up and charge it back?
Well, that's up to the village board.
We can do that. We can pick up garbage. We're not licensed. The village's crew is not licensed.
The only information I have is from the time that HUD sold it to whoever the new owner purchased it, it takes 30 days for the transfer, so apparently they cut off all the garbage pickup during this time period. And the month is coming up, and Fitz knows you could ski off that mountain there, so...
I noticed it the other night. It's piled, it's like doubled in height, it was awful.
Well, if somebody asks you what's going on, that's what's going on. That's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. We always say the best the last.
Thank you. Just a quick update on the downtown and waterfront revitalization project. The mayor and Trustee Huckrow had a chance to meet with representatives from Alon last week. We, unfortunately, because of the weather, were not able to do the boat ride. We were all pretty relieved when the sheriff's deputy suggested that it wouldn't be the best idea because the lake was a little rough on Wednesday. We did have a chance to sit and talk about the project, and I do have some dates I'd like to ask the board if they're workable. We would like to have our project kickoff slash scoping session where we would get the entire village board... Is that a timer? Somebody have me on a timer?
Yeah, you're, you're, two minutes left.
Okay. We get the entire, the entire village board, the steering committee, our Department of State rep Paula Marshman, Alon, all together to go through the project, the timeline, what we're trying to accomplish. And we are proposing Monday, November 29th at 7:00, if that's convenient for everyone on the board, and if you could just let me know, that would be great. And then we are hoping to do our full day visioning. This is what we've talked about in the past, where we'll invite all the residents to come and share their views on what they'd like to see in the downtown and the waterfront. And we're hoping to do that on Saturday, January 8th, if that will work, if that's a good date for everyone. And we really are encouraging everyone to come in and hear about what's been going on, talk about what, you know, they see as Rouse's Point's strengths and weaknesses and opportunities, and then actually put, you know, pencil and marker to paper and start drawing out what they think the village public areas, downtown and the waterfront, should look like. So if you could just let, maybe if you could let Phil or me know about those dates, then we'll go ahead and try to look for a site. I'm thinking that the January 8th meeting, we're going to need a bigger room, I hope. And I don't know, we talked in the past possibly about the school and seeing if that would work. I think if the ice wasn't down, we might try the Civic Center, but isn't that something, maybe, John, you could...
We have a short meeting.
Need to take over in a hurry.
That's right. Fantastic, thank you.
It's the first date?
Monday, Monday, November 29th, and that's 7:00, evening meeting.
Phil? Question. Do you have to advertise that meeting? The whole board's going to be there? So we really need to settle on whether we can do that date and then get advertised and out.
Would it be considered a special meeting if there's three or more present?
It's two weeks in a night. Is there a problem with everybody? Anybody?
It's not me, because I'm working days that week, so...
Everybody's okay?
We thought we...
Everybody's okay with it?
Sounds good.
But I'm sat.
Excellent. And then...
And Phil, you get a release out, please?
You bet.
And we'll see if we can arrange the room. I think we'll probably be the big thing on the 8th. Hopefully, we'll be able to make some arrangements and we'll, we'll let you know.
Me on 29th will be here?
Will be, I, right here, assuming that the room is open. We picked Monday purposefully figuring that it's usually village board meeting night, it might be a good night, so hopefully the room is open, and we'll, I'll, we'll check on that, just to be sure and think about that.
I have not been notified by anyone that it's in use that night, so we're taking dibs on it tonight.
Excellent. All right, very good. Thank you.
I don't know if what we have to, it's our board room.
That's the way I look at it.
Okay. The, along with the same lines of waterfront revitalization, I have been bombarded with emails the past few days about a new grant that is available. It's a scenic byways grant. It's federal transportation money that's funneled through the State Department of Transportation, and it's particularly targeted for communities that are on a designated scenic byway. Fortunately for us, we're on the Lakes to Locks byway, so this is money that we would have a very good shot at. The highway bill has not passed Congress yet, so the money's not set in stone, but they've issued the notice of funding availability, and they're asking for grant applications to the State Department of Transportation by December 31st. And so I, I wanted to give the board a little information and ask your approval to go ahead and start putting an application together. My thinking on this would be, it would be a way for us to get some of the extra money that we've been looking for, for the scenic pier project. It is an 80% grant, 20% local match program, and I believe, and I'm, I'm still trying to get this documented, but if we were to get a state award for the grants that we wrote and turned in last spring, that could well serve as the local match. So we might be in a situation where if we had an EPF award from the Department of State or Parks and Recreation, that would be the 20% to the 80% federal money, and all that we would have to do is match the half of the 20%, and that could probably be done with in-kind services. It might cut our cash down to very little or even none potentially on that pier if those things all work out together. I spoke to Janet Kennedy, who is the Lakes to Locks coordinator. We need to show that we are one in the multi-year byway plan. Fortunately, the mayor had established that connection years ago. We just included that information on our waterfront downtown revitalization in the Celebration Champlain planning. Our county legislator, Celine Pickett, talked to us about Celebration Champlain. We are in the byway plan for that, so she felt we would certainly qualify. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have about it, and with your approval, I would get started on the application. I'll be able to use a lot of the materials that I used in the June EPF application.
Great, yeah. I need a motion. I don't want to go. Motion by Trustee Huckrow. Seconded? Seconded by Trustee Jefferson. Any discussion?
Yes. Worst-case scenario, what's, what would it cost us in cash?
Well, if we're looking at a total project cost of about 1.4 million, if we got the 80% grant and we had to match with 20%, it seems to me when I calculated, that was about $220,000 if we had to match it with cash. Now, of course, we could use in-kind services, so we ought to be able to bring that down with the village... with the village labor and materials. For example, the electric wiring, the lighting on the pier, I believe we could probably do in-house. Hopefully, we could do other things. But I think this would be a way, hopefully, to actually end up reducing the village cash cost.
So, what you're saying is this one grant that you're going to apply for will cover the entire cost of the scenic pier, whatever is left?
Well, what we plan to do is apply for 80 percent of the total cost of the pier, almost as if we hadn't put in that application to the state for the EPF money, with the hope that they would both give us an award, that the federal money would pay 80 percent, the state money would pay 20 percent, and all we would have, you know, the state money would serve as the local match, and then we'd just have to match half of the 20 percent. So, it would be 10 percent of the project cost, $140,000 of either cash or very likely, with an EPF award from Department of State, our underground wiring on Montgomery Street would cover our cost, and there'd be no cash. Now, I mean, obviously, this is really best-case scenario, but that would be the hope.
You lost me. I totally lost. I can't...
Okay.
In order for us to not have to pay about $200,000 in cash...
Right.
We need to get the state grants.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Which we're not guaranteed yet.
No.
Okay. So, I guess I'm curious about the timing. I just, I'm curious as to whether or not, what if we don't get those state grants?
I think the likelihood is you'll get the state grants before anything else because of our quality community status. They're administered by the Department of State Division of Coastal Resources. They've been, you know, they gave us the grant last year to do Montgomery Street Park. I think, I would be very surprised if we don't get an award from them either this fall or in the spring. You know, I can't guarantee it, but I think it's very, very likely.
I guess my concern is really how the two, this new piece, how they all fit together.
Well, this, what it does is this, instead of having to spend $1.4 million and match half of that...
Yeah.
This cuts down the match to 20 percent. And then, it lets you take the state award and put that in as the 20 percent.
I understand that.
Okay.
I have that. Okay.
I think what you're trying to say is, I think you're right.
Go ahead.
If we got the federal grant and not get the state, we're going to have to, we'll be looking at paying at 20 percent.
I guess one of the things that we had talked about was being able to do this on our own timeframe, when we felt the village could afford whatever we needed to be able to do.
Right.
Okay. I guess my concern is that we seem now to be really taking a gigantic step ahead without really sitting down and thinking about whether or not we can afford to pay the whole shot now.
Well, because of the way the funding works, if we turn in the application now, the soonest we could have the money would be 18 months down the road. There's such a long lead time in this.
Right.
And if we wanted to put, I mean, we could conceivably wait a year and put an application in, you know, for fiscal year 2005, but if you get the EPF award coming now, you'd want to put that together, you'd want to have the scenic byways money. And, you know, I certainly wouldn't encourage the village to, you know, kind of arbitrarily send off grant applications, but I think the understanding is always there that should the village find itself in a position where it couldn't make the match, you just don't sign the contract.
That was a good question.
You know?
Do we have an out if something should happen?
You know, we just, you just authorized the mayor to sign that Bond Act contract at the last meeting. That was a 2002 grant award. It was probably applied for in 2001. So, it's almost like you're dealing in prehistoric timelines. It takes so long for these things. That's why I would encourage the application now instead of waiting, even though, you know, there is still a question mark, because you're unlikely to have everything nailed down at the same time. I think you have to kind of try to get the different funding in and see how it fits together.
Right. It's just different than what we've talked about in the past, but then...
I think you're incorrect, what you said, though. You said if we wait a year to apply, that we will get funding in 2006, because a year from now, we'll be in 2005.
Right. If we, if we, I guess it's 18 months from now, we might see money if we apply right now, so you add another 12 months, so you're two and a half years. And then, you run the risk of, is your EPF grant, if it's awarded now, is it stale? Is it too old to use as a match? Ideally, these would hit at the same time, so you could combine them, but...
I think also, we talked about any matches the village might have to make in terms of cash that we would not pay for, and what year we would be on it.
It would maybe push up the show, but as long as we got an out, I don't see any hurt applied for that.
Sooner the better.
Sooner the better. Smart thing to do.
You know what? All I can tell is, no.
Well, that's right.
We may not get it at all, and if we were awarded it a year and a half down the line, and we didn't get the other, we'd say, "Not signed," say it, we just can't do it.
Now, in a green, you can use in-kind services, you said?
State grants.
Right. And this one, too. You can use state money, local money, private money, in-kind services. Ours, the state can't do, but we can do the in-kind, right?
One of the things that I'd just like to mention, kind of a follow-up or wrap-up to the whole thing Missy and I talked about, I think the biggest advantage we have to gain by this is if we're successful, we're looking at an 80-20 split versus a 50-50 split with any of these other grants. I understand the concern, we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but there is the out, and this is an ideal opportunity to reduce our share, whether it be cash or in-kind, which I expect it would mostly be in-kind services, down to a very minimal amount. So, I really encourage the board to consider...
Save about 30 percent, 50 more.
And if we are fortunate enough to receive the EPF grants, regardless of the amount we applied for, $350,000, but even if we get a portion of that, that could will, as Missy said, pay for our portion of our help to reduce it to basically no cash out, like we're going to do the street underground services anyway. So, I really think it's advantageous to at least apply for it.
Two with me, Joe?
One more piece of information that I should share with you, and it's really preliminary, and Jer Tadic from Alon asked not to be held to it, but after we sat down on Wednesday, I said, "You know, Jer, can you give us a guesstimate as to what you think a different cost alternative for the pier would be?" And he said, "Melissa, I don't see doing it for less than $1.2 million, regardless of sheet piling or other construction." And that really did affect, you know, I think, the picture. We are unlikely to receive an award from the grants that we wrote to cover $1.2 million in construction cost. I don't think we're likely to get it. So, I think if we want to move ahead, we are going to have to look for some better sources of funding, so...
Any other discussion? I need a motion that Missy be allowed to apply for that grant?
Just a motion already.
Oh, I got it?
John and Brian.
Well, we discussed too long. Okay. Any other discussion, then? If there's not all of the favor vote, I use the sign of aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Just a very brief update on the boat launch project. I put a memo in all of your mailboxes. We were successful in getting the contract extension from Empire State Development, which is going to make our lives much easier in doing construction in an orderly fashion on the boat launch.